Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's always nice to have this size of audience here for several of our special presentations tonight. And I thank you all, parents, for coming down with your students tonight, and all the sponsors of the fireworks show that we're going to recognize a little bit later. But this is the positive work that the mayor gets to do by bringing recognition to the first-in-class students and then the sponsors of the amphitheater fireworks show. It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council Meeting of June the 29th, 2016, and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlee.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation to be presented by Mayor Hall, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Addison Ortiz, third-grade student at Laurel Glen Elementary School. I see that Addison hasn't arrived, so Councilmember Parlee A. will be giving the Pledge of Lord, we gather this evening to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial as we consider the merits and downsides of each matter that is brought before us. And, Lord, may we always act in accordance with what is best for Bakersfield and our fellow citizens. We also remember our neighbors in and around Lake Isabella, and the people who have lost loved ones, property, and their community as they once knew it. May they find security in knowing we, as a community, are praying for them and acting on our prayers by assisting in any way possible. Lord, we seek your blessings on our discussions and on our efforts here this evening. May we act wisely in every decision. We ask all of this in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to City Council policy, council members are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during the meeting, and we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any other time during the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. I'd like to recognize this evening the Bakersfield College Political Science Class and the Taff College Political Science Class. Thank you all for being present this evening. I'm sure that this will prove to be a very educational opportunity for all of you to learn about the workings of the City of Bakersfield and the City Council. We appreciate you being here, and at any time that you feel so that you want to be back and be a part of this event, then I encourage you to do that. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, Item 4A is a presentation of certificates of appreciation to July Fourth celebration sponsors Sunshine Metal Clad, KS Industries, Cal Water, Nissan Dodge, Southern California Gas, PG&E, Kern Refuge, Tahoe Ranch, E&amp;B Natural Resources, California
Madam Clerk, okay. It wasn't that long ago that we were confronted with the possibility of not being able to have our annual city fireworks show that we've had for the last several years at the city's amphitheater. And tonight, I'm going to honor the 11 sponsors of this special event for our community. It's also important for me to acknowledge the work of the City Council, the city staff, and AEG for collaborating to raise funds for the community celebration. The event will be located at the Park at Riverwalk and the Bright House Networks Amphitheater. The festivities will begin with patriotic music at 6:00 PM, followed by Foster Campbell and Friends onstage with family-friendly music at 7:00. Finally, the fireworks show will get underway at 9:00 PM. Now, I'd like to start my recognition for each one of the sponsors. And first, I'd like to recognize Sunshine Metal Clad, and representing that company is Sam Williams. Next, I'd like to recognize KS Industries and the Small Family, and call upon Brent Kingsbury to come forward, please.[402.22][402.22](applause) Now, I'd like to ask Rudy Valas to come forward, representing Cal Water, for their Now, I'd like to ask Rob Duchal from Southern California Gas to come forward.[431.00][431.00](applause) Now, I'd like to ask Kristen Dodd and Denise Newton to come forward for PG&E.[444.03][444.03](applause) Here, let's get a picture.
Thank you.
Those two ladies worked with me on a number of special events during the year representing PG&E, and it's always special to have them be a part of something that I'm doing. Okay, now, I'd like to recognize Chuck Haddad from Nissan of Bakersfield.[473.56][473.56](applause)
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilman. On behalf of Nissan of Bakersfield and Haddad Dodge, we would like to thank you for bestowing this honor on us. As a businessman, it is our duty to get involved with the city, and this is why we do it, paying back the community, the city, and the county. So, in all sincerity, we thank you very much.[507.87][507.87](applause)
Also, I want to recognize Mr. Haddad for Haddad Dodge. Now, recognizing the Kern Refuge Company, Jacob Panero.[527.32][527.32](applause) Representing Tahoe Ranch, Barry Zoller.[538.01][538.01](applause) Now, I'd like to recognize Councilman Rivera, if you would please come down for your recognition for your two organizations. First, for E&amp;B Natural Resources, and for Independent Petroleum Association.[565.82][565.82](applause)
I really didn't do anything, but I'm happy to accept these on behalf of those folks. Thank you. It was all them.
Mayor, the next item is a presentation of certificates honoring the Kern High School District's 2016 first-in-class students in the greater Bakersfield area.
Let me read the inscription for each one of these certificates for the students. The first one we will recognize is Madeline Cuny for Outstanding Scholarship and being honored as a Superintendent's First-in-Class 2016 Student in the Kern High School District at Bakersfield High School. Your community is proud of you.[652.04][652.04](applause) Next is Jacob Lee from Bakersfield High School.[670.00][670.00](applause) Next, from Centennial High School, Desiree D. Bowles.[691.93][691.93](applause) Next, from Centennial High School, Neil T. Matthew.[711.51][711.51](applause) Next, from Centennial High School, Hermann D. Seraphien.[735.62][735.62](applause) From Centennial High School, Kyra L. Turley.[754.75][754.75](applause) From East Bakersfield High School, Kaylee M. Holland.[770.49][770.49](applause) From Foothill High School, Erin L. Aguilar.[791.12][791.12](applause) From Foothill High School, Jeremiah J. De Leon.[808.16][808.16](applause) From Frontier High School, Frances M. Meyer.[824.75][824.75](applause) From Golden Valley High School, Teresa Duarte Dioncio.[840.43][840.43](applause) From Highland High School, Jordan N. Holmes.[857.31][857.31](applause) From Independence High School, Christina W. Pipkin.[897.73][897.73](applause) From Liberty High School, Stacy Kim.[939.62][939.62](applause) From Liberty High School, Haley C. McDonald.[958.31][958.31](applause) From Liberty High School, Lucy T. Mosier.[997.00][997.00](applause) She's going to LSU, that's why I told her about the proper colors to wear.[1011.00][1011.00](laughter) From Merrimonte High School, Maria E. Santos.[1018.25][1018.25](applause) From Ridgeview High School, Davdi F. Kaur.[1035.25][1035.25](applause) Clarice Eve Pablet, and she was also a recipient of one of my Mayor's scholarships this year, and she is from Ridgeview High School.[1080.66][1080.66](applause) From Ridgeview High School, who was also a Mayor's Scholarship recipient, Hina Singh.[1098.56][1098.56](applause) From Ridgeview High School, Geneva Z. To.[1119.75][1119.75](applause) From Stockdale High School, Ryan C. Bowers.[1183.25][1183.25](applause) From Stockdale High School, Stephanie Kao.[1200.75][1200.75](applause) From Stockdale High School, Shivani Gupta.[1219.16][1219.16](applause) From Stockdale High School, Jaden G. Watson.[1277.83][1277.83](applause) This is his dad accepting for him. He's at West Point at this point.[1287.83][1287.83](applause) I would now like to ask if any council members would like to make any statements regarding the first-in-class students. Anyone? Councilmember Rivera.
You are likely smarter than everybody sitting on this dais, so I hope that you either stay or come back to Bakersfield and serve your community in one way or another. We could certainly use your brains and your hard work and your good hearts.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. And, you know, I think that's the same thing you said last year, and he was right last year, and he's right again this year. I think you all are a lot smarter. You know, you are all in a position that very few people are able to attain. You know, we live in a society where people's feelings are more important than their achievements. I'm one of those that believes very strongly in achievement, and I know that you all put a lot of hard work into achieving what you did, so my hat's off to you, and I hope you the most success in the world.
Any additional council comments? Councilmember Sullivan? This is your event, that's why I'm asking you if you want to speak.
Well, thank you. Every year, it just is so obvious what a beautiful group of students, just beautiful, inside, obviously, and outside. And I also am very touched with knowing that this has been a family effort for many years, so I know that the parents here are very proud of their students, and we are equally proud, and it's just appreciate the mayor, year after year, being so willing to recognize all of you students, and certainly appreciate the city clerk's office, because they plan and get the names, and everything goes very smoothly. So, thank you for being here, and congratulations to you, and best of luck to your future,
We are always so very honored to have the young people of our community be recognized as first-in-class recipients. And I know, as Councilmember Sullivan indicated, this is a team-family effort that makes this all possible. And as I had the opportunity to introduce myself to a good number of you this evening, I could tell the enthusiasm that each one of you shared with me, and how you're looking forward to going to the various universities that you're planning on attending. And Councilmember Rivera is very punctual when he talks about, "Please come back to Bakersfield. Once you get all your degrees, there's always a place for you in Bakersfield." And remember that Bakersfield is the ninth-largest city in California, and we have a wonderful community that cares about everyone. So, I wish you all well, I wish the families well, and I hope that the future brings each and every one of you success. Okay? Okay, I'm going to now ask for a five-minute recess, so all of the students can leave the chambers with their family.[1528.16][1528.16](laughter) Item, please.
Public statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the copies to the city council. If you are here to speak on consent calendar hearing items 9A, 9B, or 9C, this is not the time for you to speak. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Please do not criticize or impugn the mayor, the city council, or any member of the staff or the audience. The city council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the city council cannot take action when an item is not on the agenda. The city council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor, we have two speakers this evening. The first is Jamie Seeger regarding traffic and pedestrian hazard on East College related to 3025 Fairfax and other issues.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Seeger. I've lived at 7,000 College Avenue for approximately 10 years at Shadow Ridge Apartments, which is very well-maintained and well-developed, so that is not the issue. Since I've lived there, when you're on Fairfax, turning onto College going east, there's several issues here, with the lines being painted improperly, not enough room, rubble, the road is completely falling apart, it's a traffic hazard for cars, for pedestrians. So, if you're turning onto College going east, which it dead-ends at College, the one lane that you have is extremely narrow, I don't even think it's really wide enough, and people have, they either cross over the yellow line, double line, or they can bump into the curb on the corner. I have pictures. I have photographs from Public Works, and I have a lot of my own photographs and video as well to demonstrate. So, one of my neighbors, he blew out a tire just turning on that corner, because there is no room for air whatsoever. Otherwise, you would be crossing over the yellow line, and if there's a car there, it's hard to explain this to give you a visual, it's in danger of being hit, and I've nearly been hit several times. That's one issue. Now, if you're coming out of 7,000 College, and many people travel this, they walk it every day, I've seen them walk it, after you clear the apartments, which has a sidewalk, it's been well-developed, right after that, you get to the border, and it turns into rubble. In fact, actually, the whole street needs to be repaved, it's really completely falling apart, and there are potholes as well. But when you clear that, the street where there should be blacktop has nothing but dirt and rubble, and it's turned into a trash dump. It's extremely dangerous, and again, children walk there, school buses are around there. That area is used as a parking lot for tanker trucks, any kind of truck I've seen. So, it's dangerous, and no one's cleaning it up. Now, I went to the city engineers, and they told me that 3025 Fairfax, which is the World of Pentecost Church, actually owns all of that property. They own property that wraps around onto College, even the public access, where people walk and people drive, on the other side of the fence, public access. And he said, "Since they can't, they are not going to be able to develop it, it's really not the responsibility of the city to do any maintenance or anything, except maybe code enforcement can go out there and possibly get them to try to clean up their weeds." I spoke to one minister, I don't know what they call themselves, at the World of Pentecost a couple of weeks ago, and she said that they do not have the manpower or the money to go out there and pull the weeds. So, on both sides, if you're turning from College and you turn around from College, and you turn around the corner onto Fairfax, where you would be going, like, north, there is no sidewalk. That all should be a sidewalk. There's no place for a pedestrian to walk. It's dirty. I've seen broken glass, needles, condoms, you name it. It's there. Trash is dumped there all the time. It's dangerous. And you'll not have a place to walk. So it really needs to be repaved. They need to have a sidewalk in there. And apparently, according to everybody, nobody has any responsibility, except the Church of Pentecost.
Ms. Seeger, your three minutes have expired. Please bring your statement to a close.
Okay. Well, like I said, I would like, I did leave a message for Mr. Weir, and I didn't get a call back. And I left my number. I would like to submit pictures and my photographs and a video, so that you guys can examine it. Because really, regardless of who is responsible, there's a, there's public safety. And it's a very well-traveled road. Hundreds of cars drive up and down that. Kids walk it.
You can submit your photographs here to the city clerk. Councilmember Weir, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I have not been able to return phone calls in the last three weeks. And if you did call me, I have it on my phone, and I will get back to you as soon as I can. You can certainly do that. You can email that to the city, or you can email it to my own web, to my own website, email address. Okay? And I'd like to refer this to code enforcement and Public Works to see what we can do out in that area out there, see if we can alleviate the problem. That road, I know exactly what road she's talking about. It's a mess. If we could check into that and let me know what we can do, that'd be great. Thanks.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Charles Webb, regarding consent calendar items 8AF and 8AP, property acquisitions, demolition, Centennial Corridor.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Charles Webb. I'm here tonight to oppose the acquisition and demolition of further properties for the Centennial Corridor project. The Centennial Corridor project, right now, is under two lawsuits. One regarding the source of funding. The second is a sequel lawsuit. Let me address the sequel lawsuit first. Both of these lawsuits, the city's going to lose, and I'll explain why. This is a map that comes from the California EPA. The red shows highly disadvantaged communities in Bakersfield. The green shows communities that are not so disadvantaged. What is a highly disadvantaged community? It's one that has a large proportion of minorities. It has a large proportion of people with low incomes, and it has a high level of existing pollution. The three alternatives for the Centennial Corridor, A, B, and C, all will run directly through that neighborhood of West Park. The neighborhood of West Park ranks 8.5 out of 10 in terms of California cities, neighborhoods. You can go onto the California EPA site and see its exact map. That route is inappropriate for extending the West Park, West Side Parkway to Highway 58. Now, I just want to say a word about the West Side Parkway. I love that freeway. I drive it every day. I think it's great. I'd love to see it tied into Highway 99. But what I don't want to see happen is for interstate truck traffic to be going along that Parkway and through a neighborhood like West Park, and through all the other neighborhoods out along the west side where I live. There are hazardous waste landfills on the west side of Kern County. Guess where the hazardous wastes from Superfund sites are going? Right through the center of Bakersfield. Plus, any other hazardous loads of cargo. I don't want truck traffic on that highway. You're going to lose that lawsuit, trust me, on the basis of environmental justice alone. Plus, Caltrans did not do the required pollution monitoring to show what the health effects on people would be in the West Park neighborhood. Secondly, is the funding for the West Side Parkway. As you may recall, the voters in this city voted against a one-quarter cent, actually it was a half-cent sales tax increase to fund projects like the West Side Parkway and the Centennial Corridor project. They voted it down. So what did the city council do? They added a fee to all of our, all of our electric bills without, without the voters' consent. That's being appealed through the courts. The city's going to lose that one as well. You're going to lose that funding source.
Mr. Webb, your three minutes have expired. Please bring your statement to a close. Do you have some handouts you'd like to give the council?
I do.
Please provide them to the city clerk.
Will do. Thank you for your time this evening.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Under consent calendar, items 8A through 8AW for approval, staff memorandums have been received for the following items. Item 8G, amending the exhibit to the resolution. Item 8K, correcting the ward from Ward 5 to Ward 4. Item 8AT, providing additional background information.
Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Does any council member wish to remove an item due to a conflict? Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8AW.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Item 9, consent calendar, public hearing, items 9A through 9C for approval. A staff memorandum has been received regarding item 9C, correcting the address listed in the administrative report from 2300 South White Lane to 2300 South Union Avenue.
It is now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone wishes to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. And if an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. At this time, I will open consent calendar, public hearing items 9A, 9B, 9C, and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any of these hearing items. If so, please come forward and identify yourself and inform us which item you want pulled.
9A.
Thank you very much. Does any council member wish to have an item pulled on the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, at this time, public hearing, consent calendar, public hearing items 9B and 9C are now closed. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion to approve consent calendar, public hearing items 9B and 9C.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Mr. Fox, please come forward.
Thank you. Which mic? Which mic is the, this one? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am Dennis Fox, and I'm here on the water rate increase. And oddly enough, usually people protest him for not being, being too much of an increase. I don't think this one is enough. The reason I bring it up is, I think it's analogous to your budget. You people have bought a bunch of cars. Now, to be consistent, I think you should lease them. And the way you should lease them, they say you lease 100 cars. Well, the dealer who leases you the car will give you, you know, one year, 100 cars. Next year, 50 cars. Some years, no cars. And that's, that would be, but he's going to charge you for the 100, for the 100 cars all the time. That would be consistent with the way the water works for this area. We pay for the full cost of the construction costs of the Aqueduct and the state water project. However, we don't get it all the time. And that is because of the rights situation. When that was built, we are not first in line, first in time. We're last in line and last in time here. We want to, what we'd like to do is, people have come up, well, what we'll do is we'll pay three times as much and not get any water. And that seems to be the local answer to it. And it may sound silly, but that's the way it's seen. They're getting the local users, and they are getting a subsidy off the property tax already to pay for the water. And not to seek new water sources, but they rather wish to get it from Delta farmers. Now, they, 100 years before the state water project, they farmed what would be the majority of the special districts in this state, the levee districts, which drained areas so they could have the farms. They assess themselves. They did not assess anybody else. I stress that. They did not assess anybody else. They assess themselves. And they created this farmland, which is on peat soils. This is probably some of the finest agricultural land in the United States. And you'll see signs here, oh no, on cotton trailers, which have nothing to do with food, but up there, it really does have something to do with food. And they want to locally take the fresh water with the project, or just take the fresh water from that area, so that the seawater can intrude and come in. And the farmers up there, they don't see that as a viable way to grow and to keep their farms that they've had for 200 years. So last week in court, seven little trials got combined, and it doesn't look like it's coming down here. But they still wished locally to have these projects, which will cost the property tax owners of this area billions, probably about 15 billion with a B. But we're not going to get the water, because it's going to be tied up in court. They haven't even started on the Endangered Species Act yet. And as you can see, they're holding that one in reserve. The reality is not being accepted by the people locally who are being subsidized by the city. They have no reason to. If they're getting subsidized, so, as these cost increases, because any project and the interest costs, we are not going to be borne by the statewide, but it's going to be by local users, which will be Bakersfield. Unless you intend to later add more increases or some spurious fees as the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association calls them, the council should resolve to do the three following things. One, quit buying water for other entities, and also quit paying for their costs for their advertising and their litigation. Two, do not facilitate the transfers of our local water from here to other areas. Three, you should better start seeking some water supplies to replace the ones that have been transferred from this area. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Mr. Fox, just a comment. The domestic water system is funded by the folks in the southwest, primarily business and consumers. It is, the city of Bakersfield, just for history, it's the first rate increase that we're requesting in six years. I don't know of any company that is able to do that. So we run it on a very conservative basis. It's self-funded. We don't borrow any money to run our operations. So I think I'm real comfortable with that. And if you have any other comments, feel free to do so. Thank you.
Responding to that, I said it's not raising enough.
I'm now going to close the consent calendar, public hearing, item 9A. Vice Mayor Hanson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar, item 9A. And just, Dennis, one other thing. I think that I would win the vote, because I don't think people want to pay more than they need to pay. Thank you.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under deferred business, item A, update of Exhibit A of Resolution Number 173-06, identifying the specific events for which the mayor and council members may receive advanced reimbursement. Side item was deferred from the meeting of June 8, 2016. A staff memorandum has been received, transmitting an amended resolution, Number 173-06, and the event Exhibit A of the resolution is modified.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, you know, I wasn't present for the meeting earlier this month on this particular item. I, however, though, don't feel strongly enough to advocate on behalf of at least my two requests. I will continue my involvement in League of City Committees and Caucus Executive Boards for which I sit on, and I will use the $100 a month I get from my city council salary to help pay for those things. So I'd like to remove those two items from consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Parleye.
Thank you, Mayor. For item number three of KEDC, Kern Economic Development Corporation, this is a council assignment, just like a committee assignment that's given out by the vice mayor. Bakersfield's on the Board of Directors. Once a year, they have their annual summit and/or dinner. It would be in line with the way the city reimburses or pays for, like, assignments to Kern Cog. So I make a motion to approve item number three.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
I don't see three.
Thank you, Mayor. I will support that motion.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick comment. I think it's really, I'm glad this is coming up. I think it's very appropriate. Also, the summit, I think it should be something that we encourage our city to participate in. Certainly, anything that is a benefit to our city of Bakersfield, we're the lead Bakersfield, we're the lead city, of course, in our county. And the summit is very worthwhile, has good information, and as a city, not only the representative, which, very appropriate for him to have a complimentary ticket to that summit, but also to, I think we all need to get involved more, take the lead, lead by example. I think the other cities in our county do support that every year. So I'm planning to get more involved. And so thank you, Chris, for being the representative, for being willing to serve on that. So, thank you, Chris, for being the representative, for being willing to serve on that. Good information, and I appreciate the council members supporting, financially supporting that commission. Thank you.
This is an item that was deferred from the June 8, 2016, meeting. Madam City Attorney, do you have enough verbiage to move a motion on this item?
I think so, Mayor. It's my understanding that the motion by Councilmember Parlier is to move forward with the amendment to the resolution and add to your list of reimbursement of expenditures the addition of the Kern Economic Development Corporation Kern County Economic Summit.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Item B is fiscal year 2016-17 budget.
Mr. Hewott, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Councilmembers, Chris Hewott, City Manager's Office. I'm before you this evening, tonight, with two items that are related to the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-17 operating and capital improvement budgets. The first item before you is a resolution adopting said fiscal year 16-17 budget totaling $461.4 million. That's comprised of an operating budget of about $407.4 million and a capital improvement budget totaling just a little over $54 million. Staff is not proposing any changes to the budget that was originally proposed to this council on May 4th and that you've been reviewing throughout the past few meetings. The second item before you this evening is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 16-17 appropriations limit, which totals $369.6 million. This is a state requirement, and the city's appropriations that are subject to this limit total about $152.2 million. Therefore, we are significantly below that maximum limit that's allowed by state law. And with that, staff recommends the adoption of the resolutions approving the fiscal year 16-17 operating and capital improvement budgets.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I just had a couple of questions. In the budget, I had an email that I sent to the City Manager's Office and got some answers back to. As far as the Centennial Corridor future construction in the budget that's coming up, we're budgeting about $19 million. Now, 10 million of that is for a reserve. Now, is that just for the TFI alone, or is that for both bonding and TFI?
I defer to Finance Director Nelson Smith on that question.
Mayor Hall, Councilmember Maxwell, the $10 million is set aside for a potential debt service reserve fund for the TFI loan. If we get the TFI loan, we need to fund the debt service reserve ourselves. If we use some other sort of financing, those costs can be financed in the bond issue. But either way, this money will be, it's going to lower the amount we have to borrow.
Okay. I noticed that 6.4 million of that is coming from gas tax funds and 424,000 is coming from utility surcharge. That's correct, right? I mean, I'm reading it right off. It's not an arguable sort of a position. But what I did notice was that in our budget for streets, we're going to spend about $17 million, and none of that is coming from gas taxes. Now, if we weren't doing any of these projects, if we didn't have any TRIP projects at all, would we be funding part of that with gas tax and utility surcharge?
The gas tax funds can only be used for road-related purposes. So, if we didn't have the TRIP program, it would have to be used for some other road-related purpose.
Okay. Okay. So, I guess my question is, is it prudent for us with our budget restraints at this point to take $10 million and set it aside for the Centennial Corridor when we're not really sure when we're going to start the actual construction? Because I know next year, we're actually going to do even more than that, aren't we? We're going to do $7.5 million in gas tax funds and $5 million in the utility surcharge. And I'm looking this, wondering if those are the kind of revenues we're even going to have next year. But more importantly, that, you know, we're obligating another $10 million to that reserve fund when, right now, we're in a budget crisis. And if we put those, if we put those monies towards that, do we have the opportunity to take that money back and use it? Again, it comes back to, are we going to see people laid off? Are we going to see positions unfilled in the city in the face of putting this year $19 million towards future construction? And in the next year, putting even more towards future construction? Is that a fair assessment? Is that, in your judgment, is that what we need to do?
I'll start, and Nelson may wish to add. You pay roughly two and a half times to borrow what you have to pay if you have cash. And so, it's prudent to take actions that limit the need to borrow as a pure matter of fiscal prudence. We'd like to get the $200 million borrowing amount on the Centennial Corridor down, and we are undertaking a number of different mechanisms to achieve that, one of which is funding of this reserve fund, which is used against the debt payment. It's used for the last debt payment in the process. But it also enables us to get a very favorable interest rate. Diverting the money now would lower the measures used either by the TFI people or bond rating agencies who monitor your revenues, somewhat of an oversimplification, but for five years prior to the time when you issue the bonds. So, if you take money out of the pool, then you will have a lower rating upon which to bond and an increased probability of them asking for some additional kind of securitization. So, yes, I think it's a prudent fiscal action. Nelson, if you want to add?
I agree.
Okay. So, your recommendation to the board is that with the budget constraints and challenges that we have in terms of our sales tax, and committing these funds would be a better choice than to maybe be more prudent with our money and not do this at this time with the intent of keeping people employed and filling positions that are open. I mean, I just want to be clear that that's, I think that's a clear choice here. And I just want to be clear that that's what we're being recommended to do.
You're certainly entitled to hold that opinion. The staff would disagree with you, but recognize your right to have it.
Okay. Very good. Well, you know, as long as that's, I'm going to listen to and agree with what my colleagues want to do. I just wanted to make clear that that was one of the choices we were making tonight. So, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. No question, we're in tough times. But I'm proud to say that the council and the staff have done their homework on this thing, and we continue to make progress. You know, the city grows. We have the Centennial Corridor project with 23rd, 24th Street, Westside Parkway, with all those things that we're not taking on undue debt, putting our taxpayers at risk. More than that, or maybe not more, but at least as much, that there's no signs or significant indication that we'll have any layoffs, unlike the county. We're not decreasing people's salaries, anything. So, our employees are in place. And I think that everyone up on this dais is proud that we're able to do that. So, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, along with the resolution establishing the city of Bakersfield appropriations limit for fiscal year 2016-17. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. And of course, our transportation plan has been in place for many years. I appreciated the explanation by our city manager. And I appreciate the fact that we are thinking ahead, always have, put money away, so borrowing is at a minimum, certainly for this. We're being spared having to borrow with the payback that was just explained. So, certainly in support and appreciate the team effort that we do have to work out these solutions, these future, this future planning. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
The next item has been placed on the agenda as a report item at the request of Councilmember Sullivan to have the fire chief come and give us an updated report on the 4th of July fireworks. Chief Greener and friends, please move forward.
Good evening, Mayor Hall, Vice Mayor Hanson, council members, Doug Greener, Fire Chief, Bakersfield Fire Department. It's both a pleasure and a bit of a surprise to be before you this evening, but I really appreciate the opportunity to offer some delineation, particularly between legal and illegal fireworks. And then, we'd be happy to answer any fireworks enforcement or deployment-related questions you might have after that. I'll begin here by offering an overview of illegal fireworks. And we ask the question here, which fireworks are illegal? And I think this is very timely, since the 4th of July is upon us. There's a list here. Some of it's a bit technical, but then I'll offer sort of a nutshell version of that after I'm through, going through this. But the following fireworks are illegal. Fireworks with chemical makeups that include certain borates, chlorates, and magnesium. Firecrackers, devices that explode, torpedoes, or impact devices are illegal. Skyrockets, rockets, and Roman candles, or any firework that discharges balls of fire are illegal. Chasers that travel along a surface during discharge, spin, skip, are illegal. Sparklers over 10 inches in length or 1/4 inch in diameter are illegal. Fireworks designed to surprise, this includes novelty-type fireworks, impact-type fireworks, exploding golf balls, and cigarette loads are illegal. Fireworks is determined by the state fire marshal which are unsafe are obviously illegal. Fireworks unsafe for any person not specifically qualified or trained in their use are illegal. State fire marshal-approved, safe and sane, ground-bloom type fireworks are illegal in the city of Bakersfield. And now, these do carry the state fire marshal's seal of approval, and they have the safe and sane stamp. But the council's determined that because they're very easily modified, they are illegal in the city of Bakersfield. State fire marshal-approved, safe and sane, piccolo-peat type fireworks are also illegal. And it's the same caveat. They may be state fire marshal-approved, safe and sane-stamped, but they are illegal in the city of Bakersfield. And this is a particularly interesting firework, very easy to modify and turn into an improvised explosive device, dangerous when it's modified. So, it's a good thing that it's not legal in the city. State fire marshal-approved, safe and sane fireworks of any kind that have been modified are illegal. And any fireworks without the state fire marshal's seal, excluding the noted exceptions, are illegal in the city of Bakersfield. So, in a nutshell, and this is what we offer to the public as means of education, and to simplify this list, if it spins, flies, or otherwise leaves the ground, or explodes, and does not carry a safe and sane seal, it's illegal in the city of Bakersfield. It's really not a difficult concept. I think it may help to offer yet one additional visual here. This is just a fairly solid grouping of what we typically see out there on the 4th of July, used, that is illegal. So, you have the piccolo-peat and the ground-bloom flower there on the far left, Roman candles, M80s, M100s, some fairly large aerial shells that are discharged from a tube, your garden variety, firecrackers, bottle rockets. And then, there are a host of versions of these that are out there as well that are illegal, but these are fairly common. So, to date, we have attempted to step up our educational efforts on the issue of illegal fireworks. We have over 25 social media-related posts that have gone out with very specific rules, regulations, guidance, warnings. We've done over five media-related interviews at this point. We expect to triple that before the 4th of July. Over the course of the next few days, five different fireworks-related safety press releases will be distributed. We've had a public service announcement that's run since June 1st. We're conducting a media-related, media-wide fireworks press conference on Friday. That will include a live-fire demonstration of the danger of fireworks on a wood shake shingle, rough sample. I'll be offering some editorial content on the fireworks-related issue from a safety perspective of the Bakersfield Californian. We will have two different media-related advisories published in the newspaper over the weekend. And of course, we are hosting a three-day fireworks-related drop-off at two fire station locations, beginning on July 1st and ending on July 3rd. So, we've attempted to get the word out. Over the course of the 4th of July holiday, there will be over 150 total fireworks enforcement-related assignments, 22-person BFD, BPD fireworks enforcement teams deployed over July 3rd and 4th, 17 in-service BFD units patrolling their districts for illegal fireworks on the 4th of July, 18 fire dispatchers and reserve firefighters deployed to the fireworks call center, seven fire prevention inspectors conducting site checks and permitted show standbys, five extra fire engines, light fire engines, and brush patrols staffed on the 4th of July, three additional fire captains deployed to the Fire Department Operations Center, three fire chief staff members deployed to the Fire Department Headquarters. We anticipate close to 1,000 fireworks-related responses by the Fire Department over the July 1st to the 5th period. We hope to confiscate many pounds of illegal fireworks over that same time period. Last year, we issued 44 citations. We hope to, through the work of the council and the Legend Lit Committee, be able to increase that number this year by utilizing the administrative citation process. I'd like to thank the council and the committee for that work. We appreciate that. And what we hope to not see this year are any significant fires last year in excess of $500,000. So, we hope that everybody abides by the rules, they act rationally, and they don't use illegal fireworks. So, that's just a brief update on where we're at, and be happy to answer any additional questions.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just want to thank you for affording me the opportunity to go out with your enforcement team on the 4th. I'm sure it'll be a bang.
Happy to have you.
Also, the two stations that you're allowing the illegal fireworks drop-off, what are those stations again?
It's Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 15. And we'll have drive-ups, so folks can just pull up in their vehicle, unload with their So folks can just pull up in their vehicle, unload what they have, and then leave. And we're not requiring any documentation. We're not asking any significant questions. It's just if you'd like to take illegal fireworks off the street, please help us and drop them.
And where is Station 15 again?
It is 1315 Buena Vista Road, in the vicinity of Buena Vista and Ming.
And if somebody dropped off illegal fireworks, there's no penalty or anything?
No penalty, no citation, no fine. We look at this as a way for those folks that may have illegal fireworks, and we'll even take legal fireworks if they don't want to store those. But if they want to get rid of illegal fireworks and not risk a fine, we'd happily take them and just have them go on their way.
Great, Chief. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you very much, Chief Greener. It's exemplary, the report that you gave tonight and the commitment of resources that you're making to hopefully bring a safe and sane Fourth of July to our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Greener, for doing that. Diane Hoover's in the audience and our Recreation and Parks Director. But I just wanted to quickly say that it is a real treat to go out to Riverwalk Park and see the fireworks celebration for the Fourth of July. Of course, that's just such a treasure out there, and the amphitheater, we have music, entertainment, and the fireworks display is always outstanding. So it's put on free of charge for our citizens, our residents in Bakersfield, gift of the city of Bakersfield, which is very appreciated and very enjoyed. And of course, we had the presentations for Mayor were made by the mayor tonight for the businesses and private businesses that have donated funds to make our display possible. So very much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. To bore more to go, I complete my interviews regarding our potential student council, and that was the brainstorm of Councilmember Rivera. And I must admit that when I first heard about this thing, I thought, ah, what are we doing? But I can tell you that in interviewing these young people, they got some really smart kids out there. These are top-of-the-line kids. And they came back and they threw a couple ideas at me that I would have never thought about. And so it's a generation, you know, it's a generation difference, big generation difference with me. But the fact is, they're not only smart, but they're family. You know, they really supported, it was obvious that, you know, the schools made recommendations, the families encouraged them to go there. And the toughest part of this whole thing for me is going to be that I only get to choose two of them. So I'm trying to think of what I'm going to say to the other candidates, because in my mind, that all six are highly qualified, so I just want to mention that. Secondly, I just returned from Monterey, the League of Cities. We're on the board. I happen to represent the city as vice mayor, as the ninth-largest city. And I want to say something, it'll just take a couple minutes, but honest to God, if we knew what was going on in Sacramento, really knew, I think we'd just pack our bags and, I don't know, go somewhere. But, and I'm going to give you an example. There's an initiative that the governor continues to want to release people out of prison because overcrowding, because it's a feel-good deal. So that's one area. Then there's another initiative, and it's called the Safety for All Act. Now, if you listen to that, think about that, Safety for All Act. Do I want that? Yeah, that sounds pretty good. You know what that is? That's ammunition control. How many people are going to read that? All they're going to think about is safety. So on one hand, we've got the governor and the liberals in Sacramento wanting to release people to come out and do crime. And on the other hand, and believe it or not, someone on that board had enough nerve to say, this is not gun control. Well, how in the world will I ask that police officer back there what good that gun is if he doesn't have any bullets in it? So I just really encourage everyone, I know that this group up here will, and many of you will, but read those initiatives, read those ballots, what they're promoting, because there's so many things. And I can tell you this, the initiative, they're just saying, well, you know, we'll just start at this level. Well, you know what happens? They start at this level, and then pretty soon it's this level, this level, next thing you know, goodbye ammunition. So that was one thing that we had, and I got to tell you that there was some really interesting conversation on that. And as a matter of fact, the board voted not to support it, but they didn't vote, you know, they really, it was kind of 50/50. There was a lot of people on that thing that wanted to recommend this thing to the taxpayers. The second thing, there was another item on there regarding marijuana, which we get into the city, but I can tell you that there's no question in my mind, there's going to be something in November that is going to be available for the people of California to vote whether they want to have recreational marijuana or not. Interesting thing, I just wanted to report that to the council, that I take that role seriously as far as being on the board, and it's really good that Bakersfield does have some recommendation, even though we get shut out quite often. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Oh, Happy Fourth of July, Happy Fourth of America. And I'm not a homegrown American, I came from Canada 25 years ago, but I can tell you, this is my home and I'm proud of it. And thank you again. Good night.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a few things. Number one, we passed the budget, and we also passed agreements with the employees. And I've repeatedly stated that I think we have great employees in the city of Bakersfield, and Councilmember Sullivan mentioned that we work as a team, and the employees agreed to no raises because of where we're at financially, and I think that's the team effort, and they continue to work hard. And it's great that the city of Bakersfield comes together when we need to. A couple other things, we had a report on the downtown parking garage, and since we made the improvements last year, a lot more of the community is able to use it. And we're also getting some revenue so that we can now pay for security without taking money out of the general fund, so that's good news. I've been working for quite some time with staff on a bike path on the Frye and Kern Canal. We've been working with the Brewer Reclamation, and I would like to make a referral that an update come to the Planning and Development Committee on that, so we can let the rest of the council and the public know that we're getting close, we think, to something happening there. And also, in January this year, the state signed legislation on e-bikes, and I'd like for the city attorney to prepare a report and define for us, you know, the difference between motor vehicles and e-bikes and what's allowed where in our community. They do define a difference for that. And also, a lot of new bike racks going up downtown this week, and appreciate staff working on that and the grant from Kernco. Thank you, and have a good Fourth of July.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I had a couple things. I didn't want to pull these off the consent calendar because it really wasn't all that important, but on consent calendar 8R, I think there's some verbiage missing in the administrative report, and as long as these are going to be public record, that anybody can get a hold of, I think probably you might want to look at that. I didn't have any questions on it because the recommendation came from the water board which I'm on, so I knew what it was supposed to say, and that's one of the reasons I didn't take it off. But it stops at a sentence, and I think it probably had a lot more that it's supposed to show. Also, on O and P, I know, and again, this is because this is a public record, we don't show what the actual bids were. And I know that on most of these, we show what the bids are, and I always like to look at that, because when I see the bids, you know, I kind of get a good feel for what they bid and what the ranges are, kind of what's going on in the economy for these different people. We also approved Consent Calendar number 8AA. That was for giving Parsons Transportation Group another $11 million. And I think it's kind of interesting for all of us to know that we've now paid them, to this point, we've paid them $111 million, and we're going to pay them another $11 million for parts of the Centennial Design. And, you know, I'd almost have to say that that's a huge amount of the money that we have so far spent, and it kind of questions whether they're an unbiased entity at this point, and they certainly have a vested interest in what we're doing here in Bakersfield. I know that there has been a lot of concern with car break-ins, houses being broken into. And just last night, in the north side of 24th Street, there were several houses that were either broken into or somebody attempted to break into, there were cars that were attempted to be broken into. And I know this because my wife gets on and reads Next Door Neighbor. I'm hoping that the police are monitoring that, because it's a great source, and I would like to see us partner in any way that we can with Next Door Neighbor, because they've got their hands on the pulsing wrist of what's going on out there. And I would urge anybody listening to find out if there is a next-door neighbor in your area. If there isn't, contact these people, they're easy to work with, and you can start seeing what's actually happening, because you don't know that you've got a problem until somebody's breaking into your place. But if you've got a next-door neighbor, you do know that something is happening in your neighborhood, and you can be more vigilant. Last thing is, I've gotten another phone call from the Hill House. They are continuing to have many people's cars broken into. I know that they've had people that have had their rooms broken into. And I guess what I'd really like to know is what we are doing to try and catch these people. They already have a guard there, but it can't be at this whole place, every place in this establishment at one time. And I just think at this point, we've got to do something to try and catch these people. So if the police chief or somebody from the police department wants to give me a call, and maybe we can have a meeting with the people over at the Hill House and come up with a plan, I would really appreciate that. Other than that, I hope everybody has a safe and wonderful Fourth of July.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. One, it was on the consent calendar, I just wanted to point it out that we approved a Southeast Economic Opportunity Area this evening, which, you know, I believe will greatly benefit Ward 1. I want to thank staff for working so expeditiously on that. There is at least one individual here from the Kern County Black Chamber of Commerce that really kind of is the reason this is on this agenda this evening. So I want to thank him, Mr. Bush, for bringing, at least starting this conversation and getting it going. You know, I've long felt these are excellent tools to help revitalize certain parts of Bakersfield, and certainly, I think, Ward 1 and Southeast Bakersfield will benefit greatly from this. Second item is, I'd like to ask staff to work with Safe Neighborhoods Committee Chairman, Councilmember Parlier and I, to schedule a Safe Neighborhoods Committee meeting, hopefully within the next two weeks. There are several items I'd like to ask be put on that agenda, so if staff could follow up with me afterwards, that would be fantastic. And then lastly, you know, I don't like to make it a habit of setting the record straight, but or pointing things out that bother me. I was not at the council meeting earlier this month, and there was a particular item on that agenda that I had requested be on that agenda. You know, for valid reasons, I understood why that item really shouldn't have been considered, and I get it. But there were, I did go back, I actually took the time to watch you guys on the Internet and watched the video footage of that meeting, and there were some comments that bothered me, and they really seemed to fly in the face of comments I hear this evening. And I think, you know, in the spirit of representing Bakersfield well, and representing Bakersfield well across this state, it is really important we realize the value in being involved in statewide organizations and other groups. And certainly suggesting those groups are too radical or too far removed from our interests is, I think, a disservice to Bakersfield. I think that's all the more reason for us to be involved. And, you know, I'd encourage any of my colleagues to get involved. I, you know, the reason I had requested that item is because I am not just a member, but actually sit on an executive board for one of the League of Cities caucuses. I am the Central Valley representative, and we actually do good work. We do very good work, and I think we represent the Central Valley well. I think I do my best to represent Bakersfield and my district well. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be involved in that, and I'll tell you, that's the first time we've had anyone from Bakersfield on that board. It's been largely represented by San Francisco, LA, and San Diego representatives. So I think it's really, really important that we be involved there. I am involved, I'd encourage any of my colleagues to get involved. I sit on several committees and actually attend those meetings. They aren't talking about radical things, they're talking about sensible things. I would encourage all of us to be involved in those conversations. With that, Happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 8C, regarding the expansion, or future expansion of Ming Avenue in between Hughes and Baldwin. I just want to thank City Manager's Office, specifically Chris Hewott, for working diligently on this. It's been a long process, and we have little ways to go still, but I just want to thank you for that again. And also, I totally concur with Vice Mayor Hanson when he was talking about the Youth Commission and what great students and young people we have in this community. I did my interviews at Ridgeview High School, and similarly, I had three great applicants, and unfortunately, one isn't necessarily going to make the cut. But it did bring up a, maybe a flaw within the commission. Sometimes, students go to high schools and live other areas of the city. So if you go to your local high school and you think you're going to get, you know, a student from there to be on the Youth Commission, they may not live in your ward. So I'm going to ask the city attorney a couple of things. If we could amend that to allow for, I guess, just at-large appointments instead of being ward-specific, would that be something we could do, Jenny?
Sure. Whatever, it's the council's pleasure. If you'd like, I can put it back on the agenda for July.
Okay. And the other item, I believe there's a prerequisite that you have to have a three-point GPA or above.
Correct.
That we also allow for, if a person has a recognized learning disability, that they be allowed to apply.
I can certainly, I thought that, quite frankly, went without being stated, but I can certainly be expressed about that in the ordinance.
Okay. And with my colleagues, I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and remind everybody at Riverwalk Park, at the Bright House Amphitheater, we're going to have the city fireworks display. It's going to be an awesome show. And again, I want to thank all of our sponsors, and Mayor, thank you for your presentation to our sponsors.
And also Kenny Rogers this Friday night, good old Kenny Rogers. So anyway, I'm going to be there looking forward to it.
His farewell show.
Yeah, farewell show. We're having some wonderful entertainment in our city, but certainly out at the amphitheater at Riverwalk, so it's a treat to go out there.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You know, at the last council meeting, I recognize the outstanding work on our contract renewals that we have with our partners on renewals that we have with our partners on litter pickup, and just today, we were informed that the city of Bakersfield is going to be honored by the League of Cities with a Helen Putnam Award for Excellence, and this award is going to recognize Bakersfield for its litter cleanup programs, and, you know, I think it's terrific, number one, that we're able to, through these litter pickup programs and funding sources from Caltrans and KernCog and the business private partners that we have for sponsorships, we're still continuing to provide housing for people and residents of the homeless center, and now to be recognized for the first time in eight years with this award, and it will be offered in October at the annual meeting. And in addition, I want to recognize Danizza Romo from the manager's staff, who put a great deal of amount of effort in for preparing this application, and certainly, we have outstanding results because of that application. You know, we're continuing to acknowledge outstanding employees that are retiring from service for the city of Bakersfield, and on the 22nd of July, we'll be saying goodbye and honoring an outstanding employee in the Public Works Department, who is a civil engineer and who has provided service to that department for 25 years of service, and that person is Marion Shaw, and we certainly want to wish her well in retirement, and thank her so much for all the outstanding work that she has done with subdivisions and various engineering, public works projects, so we wish Marion well. If there's no further comments, we stand adjourned.